Everyone, I'd like to call to order this meeting of Salem City Council for work session for Monday, August 18th, 2025. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Tiggen?
Present.
Counselor Nishioke?
Here.
Counselor Matthews?
Here.
Counselor Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Present.
Counselor Vang?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Present.
Counselor Varney?
Here.
Mayor Julie Hoi?
Here. Counselor Gwynn, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Okay, I understand we have no additions or deletions to the agenda?
I haven't heard of any, so I'll just go with the approval. I move for approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second by Gwynn. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Tiggen?
Aye.
Counselor Nishioke?
Aye.
Counselor Matthews?
Aye.
Counselor Gwynn?
Aye.
Counselor Brown?
Aye.
Counselor Vang?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Varney?
Aye.
Mayor Julie Hoi?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving right into discussion. Is it Mark Bechtel? Are you going to lead us through presentation?
Thank you.
Test, test. Okay. That's what we pay consultants for. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Mark Bechtel. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director for Operations at Salem Public Works. And we're going to talk about all things airport tonight. A lot of discussion on the future of commercial air service, but as well, we're going to touch on some items involving plans and projects and development at the airport. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our team here tonight. There's going to be a kind of a dual presentation mode between me and our aviation consultants. I'd like to introduce Jack Penning from Volair Aviation Consulting. Of course, I'd introduce my boss, Brian Martin, the director. Natin Joshi, he's our environmental manager, so he can answer questions about environmental issues at the airport. Rick Barnes, he's our Assistant City Engineer. He deals with transportation aviation projects. Josh Eggleston's in the back there from finance. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce Aaron Eisen. He is our Acting Airport Manager with the departure of John Pascal. Did you stand up, Aaron? Okay. A little bit about Aaron, so you get to know him a little better. He has 15 years of aviation management experience. He came to us about two and a half, almost three years ago when we hired additional people to federalize the airport, get it ready for commercial air service. He came to us from Boeing Field up in Washington, and before that, Salt Lake City International, and before that, Provo Municipal Airport. So he has considerable expertise. A lot of it's in security, but he is also well-versed in all areas of aviation management. So we are in good hands until we, at least for the next several months, do we see what we want to do. But I did not want to torture him right away, so I'm giving the presentation tonight, but he will jump up if there's things I can't answer, so.
I'd just like to say welcome, Aaron, and thank you, Mark.
Like I said, this evening, we want to talk about just the general state of things at the Salem Airport. Jack will follow me with his presentation specifically on commercial air service. We'll take some time for questions and discussion on commercial air service. And then I'll come back and give a short presentation on some of the plans, projects, and things going out the airport with more time for questions and discussion. So let's get started. With commercial air service, I think some of you there on the council, back in January 9th of 2023, remember, we made a decision to move forward and get the airport ready for commercial air service. That meant remodeling and expanding the existing terminal that had not seen commercial air service since 2008. It meant hiring additional staff to meet our federalization requirements, and it meant creating an airport security plan so that we were ready for the TSA requirements. We took several months to get that done, actually in near-record time, according to the FAA and TSA. And then in September of 2023, we signed a contract with Avelo Airlines. We went ahead and finished the airport terminal renovations, and our security plan was approved. October 3rd, 2023, we began commercial air service with Avelo Airlines with flights to and from Hollywood, Burbank, California, and Las Vegas, Nevada. In order to get the airport ready for commercial air service, we had to make a series of investments. On the capital investment side, we made $1.9 million worth of improvements to the existing terminal. We had to buy ground equipment, that's the tugs and baggage carts and loading bridge and all that equipment. And then we also bought some furnishings that Marion County provided funding for. So all told, our total capital investment was a little over $2.5 million. On the operating budget side, the airport fund did not have the means to provide for additional staffing, and so the general fund provided additional assistance so that we could hire four and a half positions to bring the airport up to the proper staffing to have commercial air service. That also involved additional hiring and providing of fire, aircraft firefighter services, and some additional police staffing. When we have commercial air service, we have to have a police officer there on duty whenever the TSA check area is in operation. Also, when we have an aircraft, commercial aircraft coming in, the ARF truck, the aircraft... What is ARF? Rescue firefighter, yeah, okay. We just say ARF all the time. So the aircraft rescue firefighter truck is out there 15 minutes before the plane lands and has to be there 15 minutes after it departs. So all that had to be done before we could start. And before we could get an airline onboard, we had to have a minimum revenue guarantee. You'll hear us refer to it as the MRG. And a $1.2 million MRG was in place. And what that does, for those who may be listening, is that that provides a minimum amount of revenue for an airline that's coming into a new market so that they don't lose money, but they have a minimum amount of revenue they can count on while they're establishing the service. This revenue guarantee was to last for two years. Most of it was provided by the federal government, about $850,000. The other $350,000 was provided through a combination of local community grants, contributions in the form of local match for the grant. And that was provided through efforts through Travel Salem and Fly Salem and the Chamber of Commerce and a lot of local businesses. So during the 22 and a half months of operation of commercial air service, before August 10th, when Avelo Airlines concluded their service with us, we carried just a hair under 90,000 passengers. Through 820 operations, an operation is either a landing or a departure. We don't, flights is a difficult term to use because it can mean different things. So we call them operations. So 820 landings and takeoffs. And a very important statistic was enplanements. Enplanements are people getting on the aircraft. And the FAA determines a lot of our entitlement capital funding by how many people get on the aircraft or enplanements. And a big threshold is 10,000 enplanements per calendar year. And in two of those years, 2024 and 2025, we exceeded that 10,000 enplanement number threshold, and that means we get considerably more capital revenue than we would have gotten if we had not had commercial air service. So as far as destinations went, we started with two destinations, Las Vegas and Burbank. We gained Sonoma County, Santa Rosa, California for about four months. That destination was outside of the minimum revenue guarantee. That was just a market opportunity that Avelo was trying out. Then we went back to two destinations. For several months, Avelo dropped the Las Vegas service, and then both destinations were back in service again towards the end of the period. There were also some times where we had, especially the Burbank flight, we'd have up to three flights a week in the holiday period. So we had some variance in the service. As far as payouts for the minimum revenue guarantee, this graph shows you when we made payments to reimburse the airline. There were seven months where we did not need to provide any money at all from the MRG. And of the $1.2 million that was available, we spent $854,000 and change with $345,000 remaining. Of that $345,000 remaining, assuming Avelo does not invoice us for any payments for August, $244,000 will go back to the federal government from the federal component of the local match, the federal component of the MRG. The local match portion has about $101,000 remaining. That money goes back to the donors, and they can choose to either keep that or they can pay it forward towards a new MRG if that's a direction that we take. So let's talk about the economic benefit of commercial air service here in the Willamette Valley. This data has been provided to us through Jack Penning, and he's going to speak to it in a lot more detail. I'm just going to set the stage. But from a period between October 2023 and April, which is what we have data for in this area, with 75,000 passengers, total passengers, deplanements, people getting off the plane, inbound passengers, we had about 51,500 deplaning passengers. And of those, about 38,200 are considered new visitors to Salem. So we were successful in bringing over 38,000 people that are new to the Willamette Valley to visit us and to spend money, which is what they do. And so when you look at that new visitor spending using State of Oregon economic factors and multipliers that are standard to the industry, we are estimating that we had an economic impact to the community, the greater community, of $32.5 million. If you divide that by the number of new visitors, that means they spent about, on the average, $851 each on things like lodging, restaurants, shopping, car rentals, fuel for car rentals, all those types of things that you would spend money on. If you look on a return on investment, for every $1 of the MRG that was spent up to that period of time in April, which is $756,621, for every one of those dollars of the MRG that was spent, it brought in $43 in economic benefit. So you have an ROI of 43 to 1 if you look at that statistic. If you want to drill down a little further, if you look at the local contribution portion that was spent up to that date, for every one of the $220,706 that was spent of the local contributions, $147 was spent by our new visitors. That's a return on investment of 147 to 1. So again, Jack can talk about that some more, but that's a significant economic benefit just in the 22 months we had service. Another return on investment was of the $2.54 million that we spent in capital investment to get the airport ready for commercial air service. Because we met our enplanements threshold, we are receiving in federal fiscal year '26, $1.15 million in additional federal funding. In federal fiscal year '27, another $1.15 million in federal capital funds. And through the efforts of Congresswoman Salinas, we were able to secure two federal earmarks, one for $850,000, one for $250,000, that will go towards expanding our terminal. That is enough to cover the planning, the design, and the permitting and approvals for a new terminal design. So if you look at that, we received $3.4 million in additional capital funding from the federal government than we would have received if we had stayed at General Aviation Airport only. So that's a return on investment of $860,000 in federal funding. Now, all this return on investment has come at a price to the general fund, operating fund. As we talked about earlier in the presentation, we had to make some investments both on the staffing side and then to assist with fire and police services for the airport. When you look at the two past fiscal years and the fiscal year that we are most recently into, we will have spent just under $2 million for the additional staffing to keep the airport ready and federalized for commercial air service. If you add up the amount of general fund money that was needed to pay for fire and police services, that's about $3.2 million. So the general fund is into the airport commercial air service effort to the tune of about $5.2 million. On the revenue side, commercial air service generated a total of about $266,000, which leaves us at a negative operating return on investment of about $4.9 million. Some things about the revenue that was generated for commercial air service. We receive revenue from commercial service in the forms of our fuel flowage fees, the fuel that the airline buys from us when they land and they have to fuel. We receive parking fees for passengers that park and use our services. And then we also get a turn fee. Every time an aircraft lands and they use our ground equipment and they take off, we get $75. So those are the three revenue services. We had just started selling advertising at the terminal when Avelo left, and so that any revenue we got there was nominal. But we did have a firm finding people to advertise, so that is something that we're now set up to do if we see a restart in commercial service. One of the lessons we learned, and you've probably heard us say this before, is that we overestimated the amount of paid parking. It did not dawn on any of us that our airport being so centrally located that people would rather just, you know, drop off their passengers than park. And part of that is, as air service would have matured and would have had more destinations and more flights, we would have drawn from a greater market area, and people would have driven and parked their cars because we would have been providing more competition to Portland and Eugene. But because we were there for less than two years with service, that is a lesson that we learned. Our biggest fear when we first started is that we would not have enough parking, and we had plenty of parking. So that was a lesson learned. As far as the current fiscal year goes, we are looking at a loss of about $238,000 in revenue from what would have been Avelo. And the reason why that's a higher number is because they would have started paying landing fees in October. So the two vacancies we have at the airport right now will cover the loss in revenue for this fiscal year, assuming they remain vacant for the remainder of the year. To give you a brief view of where we are with staffing, we have nine full-time employees, two positions are vacant. Joey Langenhorst, our Operations Program Manager, is leaving at the end of the month, and his job will be filled by one of our airport maintenance operators who will receive a bump. Is our airport ready for new service? Yes, our airport is absolutely ready for an airline. We are still federalized. Our airport is still a secure airport. We still run the security as if we had flights leaving tonight or tomorrow. We are just as secure an airport as Portland, Eugene, Redmond, you name it. So we're still checking badges. We're still making sure all the safety and security protocols are followed. The TSA staff that were assigned to our airport have been reassigned to both PDX and Eugene. One of the issues we need to be aware of is that our TSA screening equipment belongs, does not belong to us, and we didn't pay for it. It's installed and owned by the federal government. Generally, once an airport loses its commercial air service, they will keep the equipment in place for about 90 days. After then, they may begin looking for other places where they could, where they need that equipment and may use it. And so they've informed us that we have till about November 10th to get a letter of intent from another airline, or we may risk having that equipment removed and taken elsewhere. They spent a lot of money to buy it and to get it here and to install it. They're not in a hurry to remove it, but as you'll hear from Jack, the airline industry is a volatile place, and they may need to move it somewhere else. Once that equipment is removed, there is no guarantee we would get it back in a hurry. We would have to get in line with other airports that are waiting for equipment. So it could be weeks, months, or close to a year. Depends on the security situation at the time. Our fire department is still able to provide the ARF protection, and we are still able to handle any incoming airline flight that may be a diversion. We've had some diversions, usually due to weather. We can handle charters and all types of commercial aviation. So what's the status of the airport fund? If you look at a revised five-year forecast for the airport fund, with a minimal amount of commercial air service, essentially similar to what we had with Avelo, and Avelo was a minimal amount, our airport fund would still be heading in the wrong direction as you go through the five-year forecast. By fiscal year '27, we would have pretty much an insufficient ending fund balance, and we would have a negative ending fund balance in the last three years of the forecast. And that's carrying forward most of the assumptions of our previous forecasts. None of this reflects the fire and police aspect of it that is embedded completely in the general fund. It does include $100,000 in transfers per year to match federal construction grants at the airport. And by the end of fiscal year '26, we will have burned through any savings from vacancies and any other savings we would have accrued in the airport fund. So not only do we need to stabilize this fund, but we need to find new revenue. So there's different ways we can go with finding new revenue and stabilizing the fund. One route is to continue to grow by reestablishing commercial air service and aggressively pursuing a larger, more active amount of commercial air service. The other way we can go would be to no longer pursue commercial air service, and we'll talk about the pros and cons of that. If we follow the path of recruiting and going forward aggressively for more commercial air service, this table that you see here shows that in order to negate that general fund transfer for airport staffing, we need to have at least 12 departures per week from the airport. I'd say 12 to 14. That's two flights a day. So that is certainly doable, and that would then be able to no longer need a subsidy directly to the airport fund. If we were to completely be self-sustaining as far as the amount of expense that the fire and police put in, then we need about 36 flights or departures per week, and now you're talking about seven flights a day. It is doable, but it's not doable right away, and Jack, again, can tell us just how realistic a goal that might be. Some things to keep in mind is we will begin charging landing fees. Council approved charging landing fees for our non-tenant aviation users of the airport. That begins September 1st. We made a rather conservative revenue estimate on that. We're hoping that it is more revenue enhancement than we were hoping. Also, we are aggressively pursuing developing the airport's developable property, and we're going to talk about that before we're done tonight, for lease, both lease revenues to the airport fund, and then also for every time we build a hangar or an industrial or commercial user comes and they build structures and improvements, the city's general fund gets property tax revenues, and so does the county. If we were to allow commercial air service to lapse for a lengthy period of time or to make a conscious decision to not pursue commercial air service, there are pros and cons to that. It does immediately reset us back to pre-2023 operations. We become a general aviation airport again. It would save the general fund transfer for airport staffing. It would reduce the additional costs of fire and police on the general fund. And it is a decision that can be reversed over time, but not instantly. Okay? The cons of a decision of that nature would be a loss of the community economic benefit, a loss of our initial capital investment. 22 and a half months just isn't enough time in many of our minds to recoup that $2.5 million investment that we made. We may have to, in fact, we would likely have to return that $1.1 million that Congresswoman Salinas was able to secure for us, because if we were to consciously give up commercial air service, it's doubtful then that Congress would allow us through the FAA to then expand our terminal if we've made a decision to go away from commercial air service. There may be other funding that has to be either reduced or returned as well. I will say that when I took over the airport under my division, the airport was significantly understaffed and under-resourced before we ever started talking about commercial air service. So reducing the airport back to its pre-2023 status does not mean the airport is doing well. It would go back to being understaffed and under-resourced. And then we talked about the loss of TSA equipment and the amount of time it might take to get it back. In either scenario, we are still going to move forward with trying to aggressively develop airport properties and charging landing fees. If you want to go ahead and pursue an MRG to allow us to then start competing for air service, there's kind of two ways we can go. One would be to put together a community-based MRG where the entire amount of the MRG is put together through contributions of an array of different funding sources, local businesses, Travel Salem, Fly Salem, the Chamber, other government entities, whatever, but it would be a compilation of a number of funding sources. The benefit of a local MRG is it shows an airline just how much effort and desire there is in the community to have that service, the commercial service. It also would allow us to compete more rapidly for an airline. In either scenario, we are still going to move forward with trying to aggressively develop airport properties and charging landing fees. If you want to go ahead and pursue an MRG as a, to allow us to then start competing for air service, there's kind of two ways we can go. One would be to put together a community-based MRG where the entire amount of the MRG is put together through contributions of an array of different funding sources, local businesses, Travel Salem, Fly Salem, the Chamber, other government entities, whatever, but it would be a compilation of a number of funding sources. The benefit of a local MRG is it shows an airline just how much effort and desire there is in the community to have that, that service, the commercial service. It also would allow us to compete more rapidly for an airline, and we could see the restoration of commercial air service more rapidly. They also would be allowed to have a little more flexibility in the terms of that MRG agreement, because it would be essentially our community's money in the terms of that MRG with the, with the airline. Keeping in mind that airlines don't necessarily like to negotiate a lot of terms, and again, something for Jack to address. Another option we have is to wait until the next round of federal small community air service development grants are available. This fall is when we can apply for those. They're awarded in the spring, so that would allow us to have an MRG similar to what we had with Avelo. One of the downsides of that is that it would delay the restoration of air service considerably, at least a year. There's no guarantee that we'd be awarded those federal funds, and then you are, you have very little flexibility because you're dealing with a federal contract of funding. There's still a local match required, so we would still have to have some amount of local contributions for that MRG. So, I've set the stage for Jack, and if you want to let him give his presentation, then we'll entertain as many questions and discussions that you want to have. So, Jack, here you go.
Well, yes, thank you, and many of you I've known for some time as we've been through this process. My firm was first brought in about a decade ago by community business leaders who wanted to understand if Salem would be a large enough market to support air service. We did a lot of study. We met with a lot of airlines, took a lot of work to get an airline here. We won, as you saw, a federal small community grant, and through all of that work, found a partner in Avelo. The way that things have turned now, we did not anticipate. Many of you were here last fall when we were talking about the success of the service. One thing that we learned is the community can support air service in a profitable way, and I'll explain more about that in a moment. What I want to go through, and a little background, I've lived in Oregon twenty-five years, recently moved away and miss it every day. This is a great place. It's a big part of both my heart and the heart of my family, and this, this project and working with Salem has been very important to me personally, because seeing the success that we had has been very gratifying. I want to talk about the current situation. This was not about service failing. That's the most important point I can make to you. This, this had nothing to do with Salem not supporting air service. This was about an airline that had a strategy shift that nobody saw coming, and I'll explain that as well. We've learned a lot, and we've done a lot of new study. We have a lot of new data that helps inform us and things that we can and most likely could support into the future, but there's a lot going on in the industry. The Avelo situation just being one tiny bit of that, that is changing the landscape for small community air service beyond what we could even anticipate five years ago. We do see a path forward for the community, and it is up to the community to decide if that is a priority. It's not up to me. I'm your consultant. I'm here to give you data and information. You're here to ask me as many difficult questions as you would like. In the end, it is about what this community wants, and we will support whatever that is. So, the current situation. Avelo began as a West Coast airline. This was Avelo's route map when Salem service began. You can see it was entirely based around Burbank with a few routes to Las Vegas, including our route to Las Vegas. Salem fit that original model. The model was to carry people back and forth from the LA basin to places where people in Los Angeles like to travel, and for people who had moved to places like Salem that wanted to go back and see family that was in the LA basin. And we were fortunate. We had more capacity than almost any community on this map with the exception of Burbank, because we did have service to Las Vegas, we had service to Burbank, and for a short time to Santa Rosa. We had a lot of capacity. We fit this model perfectly, and you'll remember the CEO of Avelo was here when our service began and said, "We can see this growing as we grow the West Coast." So, that's what, how it started. What happened beyond that was, Avelo had an opportunity through an incentive with the state of Connecticut to establish a base at New Haven, Connecticut. That base turned out to be far more successful than anyone had forecast, including Avelo themselves, and they found that they were generating significantly more revenue for every hour a plane flew out of the East Coast base than they were generating from the Burbank base. In fact, for every hour an aircraft flew, they generated two point three times more money flying on the east than they did flying in the west. So, as they were evaluating where those planes needed to go, they looked at those numbers and said, "We can immediately double our revenue if we move the West Coast base planes to the East Coast." And that process went on for months. They also were filling a higher share of seats in the east, and so they decided to pull all West Coast markets. This was not an airline picking on Salem. It wasn't Salem underperforming. It was an opportunity to use an asset in a different spot that could make more money, and that is the microcosm of the entire airline industry right now. All airlines are evaluating is where can I make the most money per hour of flight possible in the environment today? That includes incentives. Avelo didn't have to pay any aviation fuel tax in Connecticut for two years. That saved them tens of millions of dollars. That's a reason their revenue per hour was so much higher. The incentives at many of those communities that are in that route map were much more significant than what we offered. So, we were a victim of a larger strategy to shift capacity to the east in order to make more money on each hour. We, though, did perform very well. If you look at it, Avelo made eight point two million dollars in the time that they served this market. They sold three out of every four seats that they flew into this market, and, and I think, you know, you look at the, the numbers, the seats that actually were empty tended to be on flights that were either delayed or operated at an odd schedule. On our prime flights, in the afternoons on Thursdays and Sundays or Mondays and Fridays, we were running above ninety percent of our seats sold on these flights. They carried roughly a hundred thousand passengers, eighty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-five on this specific route, and the average cost for a Salem passenger round trip to Burbank and Las Vegas averaged was a hundred and ninety-two dollars. That includes the fare, the bag fees, the seat fees, everything. That was the average price paid, exceptionally low. So, Salem passengers got an exceptionally good airfare when they flew out of this airport. So, we did have the partnership to serve the people that we promised that we wanted to serve when the service first began, and so we can be proud of those. However, Salem was in the middle of the pack in terms of the West Coast network. We averaged, if you look at the rolling last twelve months, about seventy-four percent of our seats filled, where Eugene was filling about seventy-eight percent. In terms of the fare, our average fare alone before any other fees was fifty-nine dollars. Other markets had higher fares. Some were a little bit farther away, but Eugene, for example, the average passenger paid eighty-three dollars, and our average passenger paid fifty-nine. So, we saw more discounting here in order to fill the plane. It's not necessarily a terrible thing. It can still be profitable, but if you look at the revenue per flight, this is a really important number, and this will explain why we are in the position of, of having to go recruit another carrier while some of the routes have been backfilled by others. We averaged about ten thousand dollars in revenue per flight, which is a solid number for a flight of that distance, but Eugene, for example, averaged fifteen thousand dollars per flight. And so, if the flight length is the same, you can see why Eugene might get replacement flights sooner than us. There's a lot less risk because there was almost fifty percent more revenue on each flight for the airline. So, we were above average in the west in filling seats, but we were below average on fare and revenue. Again, it's not, it's not a terrible thing, but it does indicate that our market for a new carrier will be slightly riskier than one of the markets that's at the top of this list. So, again, Mark talked about this in terms of the funds used. A narrative often is that the airline came and took all the money and then left. It's not the case here. The airline is leaving money on the table. The airline is staying in Burbank through the beginning of December in a couple of routes. Left Salem with guaranteed money before it left markets without guaranteed money. So, it didn't operate here in order to take a guarantee. It operated here in order to build a market over time that would be profitable. If it just wanted to take the guarantee under the contract, keep in mind, the guarantee is not Salem tax money, but the contract with the carrier would have allowed them just to operate empty flights for the next three months and take the rest of that money. That wasn't the priority for this airline. The priority was to build the market to a profitable market. I would also note, we did not guarantee a profit to the airline. The way the minimum revenue guarantee worked is we had a baseline cost of their operation that we agreed to before, that's in the contract, before the contract was signed. That was their base cost. They could only generate a profit if they were above the guaranteed revenue number. We made up the difference so that they wouldn't go below their cost of operation in the first two years of service. That's what the agreement was. So, we did not hand over profit to the airline. They only made a profit in months where they didn't use the guarantee. And as you saw in the chart, there were a number of those months where they had a very high profit, and if you were to aggregate those months, we would have only used two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because most of the months were profitable. That's how they made their money. So, they are leaving money on the table. We will return funds to the Department of Transportation with the hopes that we'll be able to win a new grant should we pursue air service in the future. We talked about these, these visitor numbers. These are numbers that the airline is required to report to the Department of Transportation showing where the passengers originate. These numbers are passengers who live either in the Los Angeles basin or Las Vegas, or in a small portion in Santa Rosa, who flew to Salem to visit the Willamette Valley. That's what these numbers are. Vetted through the Department of Transportation and based on the originating zip code of where they live, based on how they purchased their ticket. We averaged ninety-one new visitors a day over those twenty-two months of service that came to the Willamette Valley. The impact, we talked about this already, so the state of Oregon does a study every single year determining how much each visitor spends in each county. In Marion County, that averages about a hundred, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars per visit. So, using those numbers, we know that we generated forty-three dollars in new spending to the community for every dollar that the community and the federal government put up for the revenue guarantee. And again, I wanted to explain where those numbers come from so that you can understand that. So, what have we learned? Well, we learned a lot from the first portion of that presentation, but we also, we went and polled all of the tickets by zip code to and from the shaded area, which we consider a prime market area. So, basically, Woodburn South and then north of Junction City, up the valley. We don't go out to the coast, but we pulled the tickets from here. Avelo, of all the passengers traveling to and from that area, captured two percent. So, it sounds like a small number, but that's pretty remarkable considering we hadn't had service in over fifteen years. So, two percent of all the people who flew in and out of that area used our service. That is an, again, it sounds like a small number, but that's an excellent number with limited, less than daily flights. We also saw a huge increase in passengers using Eugene. Previous study, seven percent used Eugene. Now, twenty-four percent use Eugene. The main reason being it is much more difficult, as you all know and as I know, because that's how I got here, to fly to and from Portland with the traffic. I drove down from Portland today, and it took an extra thirty minutes sitting in traffic through Wilsonville. Thirty extra minutes. You have to leave, coming to this meeting, I left four hours early just in case. You don't have, if you have to be somewhere. And so, we're seeing fewer and fewer passengers using PDX, more and more passengers using Salem, indicating to us that our opportunity to capture the passengers in the Willamette Valley is higher than it was before, because the PDX aversion is greater. I would also point out, our market is growing exceptionally quickly. We grew since two thousand nineteen, so in six years, this, the number of passengers flying to and from the shaded area has grown by forty-five percent. We have almost three thousand passengers a day in each direction flying in and out of the Salem area, three thousand a day. So, if you think about that, that's enough to fill twenty flights a day, and we're talking about where is break even, two flights a day for the main staff. We have enough passengers, assuming we don't pull a single passenger out of Portland to fill twenty, twenty flights a day. On Avelo, twenty percent of the passengers who used that, who were outbound, came from Portland. That was a little smaller than we had forecast, because the Salem market was much more robust than we had forecast. We had forecasted about thirty-five percent were going to come from Portland, and twenty percent, because Salem passengers were buying the tickets first. But we still had twenty percent coming from the Portland metro area, which indicates to us this is a valid alternate airport for the Willamette Valley. And again, like I said, enough demand, taking Portland out of the equation to fill twenty, twenty of the Avelo-sized aircraft every single day. Now, in no world, in the next five years, are we going to have twenty flights a day out of this airport. Two would be great, but that is how many people are traveling, and I want to underscore that. We do work best as a low-cost alternate airport, where it's cheaper to fly out of our airport than it is to fly out of Portland. If you look at our study, the average person flying out of Salem paid sixty-one dollars during the study period to fly Avelo. When they drove to Portland, they paid two hundred and sixty-two dollars one way. That's one way. That's the average. Very high fares. The average Salem passenger paid almost two hundred and fifty dollars, but those who used our airport paid sixty-one. They saved a fortune using our airport. That's money that Salem residents then have left over to spend in the community. That's important. So, we operated very well in that, and if you look at where passengers were traveling, the dark blue is the share that used Salem. The gray is the share that still drove to Portland or Eugene. We have almost three hundred people a day that fly to Los Angeles basin, but we didn't have enough seats to nearly handle that demand. Same with Las Vegas, but the big key, if you look at, these are our top markets, Avelo picked the right markets. Those were the right markets. Those are the two largest, the two lowest risk. I say that too to say, a new carrier, regardless of who that carrier is, is highly likely to pick the same markets. So, while we may want service to Phoenix, and we may say San Diego would be better, and Denver would be better, and we really want service to Seattle, the least risky are the ones that have so many passengers that you naturally have a small share that you need to capture in order to be successful. So, when we look at this, we think it's highly likely you will see a carrier be interested in those before some of the ones lower on the list. So, with that, the industry obviously changing rapidly. So, Salem lost service. These are all routes that have been canceled since summer of last year. Airlines have canceled over one thousand routes touching the United States or within the United States in the last twelve months. One thousand routes. So, while this is absolutely horrible for us and for me personally and for this airport, we are just point zero two percent of the routes that have been canceled in this period. Airlines are radically and dramatically changing their networks and pulling service, and so we are just a small cog, and I wish I could say I didn't have any other routes on that map, but that map has a lot of routes in Volair markets too. And if you look at the airlines that are cutting, Avelo capacity this fourth quarter will be down five percent from last year. They've cut more than all but two carriers in the United States. They pulled a ton of capacity out of the network. Spirit has pulled a ton of capacity there on the brink of another bankruptcy, and Sun Country pulled a lot of capacity because they fly a lot for Amazon. They're flying a lot They're flying a lot of cargo. You look at the airlines that are growing, the top two, Breeze, which three days after Avelo left Burbank announced that it would enter Burbank, Breeze will be up 43% in the number of seats that it is offering this fourth quarter versus last. Allegiant, very, very strong growth. The majors look like they're growing a lot, but most of that is just larger planes. So the 50-seat jets have now become 76-seat jets, and nobody's building 50-seat jets. If you had a 76-seat jet, now you have 150-seat jet. Everything is getting larger. And so you see the number of seats that United has grown by, almost 6%. That's almost entirely taking delivery of new, larger aircraft and retiring aircraft that were smaller. So not adding flights, but adding seats. The exceptions being Breeze and Allegiant, who are adding many, many more flights. The other thing that is going to impact Salem dramatically over the next 20 years is Portland. This is a now $2.2 billion investment in this new terminal. It is beautiful. It is a wonderful experience once you're there. But this is dramatically increasing cost to airlines. Before the terminal was started, an airline paid $9.50 to put a passenger on a plane at Portland. That's what they paid the port of Portland. This year, they will pay $21 for every passenger. So you think, you got $100 fare to go to LA out of Portland. $21 of that, the airline is giving to the port of Portland. So the airline's getting $79 on your $100 fare. By '27, the port of Portland says its cost will be $26 per passenger. What's going to happen is that fares are going to go up and up and up at Portland as airlines try to pass on the additional cost. Airline costs up 173% at Portland. That's remarkable. And low-cost carriers are going to look to leave. Frontier said airports with a higher cost per employment, CPE, or expensive gate fees are much less likely to sustain ultra-low-cost carrier service. And Spirit said they will not, they simply won't enter a market that has high airport costs. And what we've seen with Spirit, they were flying multiple cities out of Portland. They're down to one departure every day at Portland because the costs are too high. These type of carriers are going to be looking for other airports to fly to with lower cost, which means regardless of the way the community handles air service right now, in five to seven years, there are going to be airlines wanting to serve this airport. And since it is a public facility, the city is going to be obligated to allow them to operate. It doesn't mean you have to give them incentives. It doesn't mean you have to market for them, but it does mean that you're highly likely to see interest in air service over the longer period. So keep that in mind as you think about where the facility is going over the longer term. There's a significant opportunity. We talked about 36 flights a week. That's how you get to 36 flights a week, is this is the low-cost alternate airport for Portland. So with that in mind, that long-term cost advantage in Salem is going to be a factor for carriers that offer lower fares. So a path forward, should you choose to go this way, well, Breeze, as I mentioned, three days after Avelo announced it would close Burbank, Breeze added Burbank to Eureka, Eugene, Band Redmond, and Pasco. So those were all flown by Avelo. If you look at their ranking, I showed you the revenue per flight rankings earlier. They were number one, two, four, and five on the revenue per flight. We, in Salem, were number seven. We just missed the cut. We just weren't quite, I guess, as risk mitigating as these other markets. I will note also, some of these other markets quickly put together incentives in that two-day period to secure Breeze. So they immediately put, in some cases, county or port money into a fund for Breeze service. But if you just look at the revenue ranking, Breeze chose the least risky markets. So we had slightly lower fare than peers and slightly lower total revenue, so we were just below the cut line. But we've demonstrated strong demand. We have demonstrated that we can pull passengers from Portland, and we don't even have to demonstrate this because every airline knows we have lower costs. So if you look at our target markets, those are still the same, and the value proposition to a carrier is still the same as it was before. So should we move forward with air service and air service development in Salem? It is a bit of a race right now. The main piece that's pressing us to go quickly is the TSA. If that equipment goes away, which it could in November, it will be much more difficult to secure it again than it was to secure it when we got it a couple of years ago. The main reason being, the TSA is actively now telling airports that they will not provide service in a new market because they don't want the increased cost. They don't want to purchase new equipment. So it could be a situation that once our equipment is gone, it's a multi-year process to re-secure equipment. So that's why I say now is working on developing local funding. And I think in no community should that funding be, should one organization be leaned upon for that funding. It has to be a coalition within a community, within a county, within a state, with business and private and public partnership at the top of mind, mainly because that works best. It worked really well, frankly, with Avelo until their business strategy changed because we had a lot of people with skin in the game who used that service. It provided service to a very wide and diverse group of people. We will, should we move forward, be applying for Small Community Air Service Development Grant Funding, which was the funding we're going to be giving back some, but we have to reapply. That will be in fall, but that is far from a guarantee. There will be roughly $15 million in funding for the entire country and around 60 airports vying for that $15 million. So we've got maybe a 10% chance of winning, maybe. So we can't count on that. Ongoing airline meetings. We have, the day after Avelo announced that it would leave, we had airline meetings to discuss with carriers the market opportunity. I have been talking to pretty much every carrier you saw in that sheet with the logos about the opportunity. So those are always ongoing. But the work to secure a letter of intent needs to be between now and November. That's the most important piece. And so with that, I know we've taken so much of your time, but I'm here at your disposal for questions, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Penning. Mark, did you have something to add?
I was, I was just going to say now is the time for questions and discussion on commercial air service. The development issues we can do when we're done talking about commercial air service, so.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? Counselor Brown.
I have about 52. So Director, the first question would be, you know, you gave us the list of all the different airlines, and you've been having, you know, conversations with those. Out of those, which ones are rising to the top that are interested in coming to Salem?
I can't publicly identify specific carriers, but I can say if you look at that list and you see the carriers that are growing the fastest, those are by far the most likely.
Got it. Okay. And just a second, Madam Mayor, I'm going to follow up just one more. So obviously, there's some benefits when it comes to, you know, revenue in the city and the county by having an airline. I think in the midst of all of this, there is something that is probably sitting on the hearts of everyone up here, is that, you know, a few days ago, this administration, they sent a letter to our governor, and of course, to let them know that if we do not comply with their rules and their regulations, as far as being a sanctuary state and city, that we can expect some serious repercussions because of that. When I think about that and I weigh that in the balance of what could happen, and then all of a sudden, here we are deciding that we want to have a new airline, a part of me is struggling with, if we say yes and we move forward with having a new airline, but yet at the same time, we do not relinquish, you know, the control when it comes to being a sanctuary city or state, those two are going to merge. And sooner or later, this administration, they're going to find a new way or a new strategy. And so it's not more or less a question, and I know Mr. City Attorney is probably thinking like right now, okay, Urban, where are you going with this question? It's not really a question, but it's something we need to consider because it's like we are playing chess. And on one hand, we do want to bring in some additional revenue, but we also got to be smart because whatever the governor decides to do, it could impact us. I'm going to change that. It will impact us. And that, to me, it's like a rain cloud that's sitting over our heads because we don't know how this is going to play out. So there is no question there. It's just something I just wanted to keep in the forefront. Madam Mayor.
Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Nordy.
Thank you. Great information, and it is very encouraging to hear that we had almost 90,000 passengers, over $30 million coming to the Lamont Valley area. It may not have gone into the city's pockets, but it went into the pockets of so many local businesses and their employees, and our wineries, our distilleries, our shops, our restaurants, our convention center, our hotel staff, et cetera, et cetera. It's hard to imagine what $32 million actually means, considering how that works its way down into people's paychecks and how they then spend it in the community again, right? So I just want to validate that and say that out loud, that this was extremely successful for our local economic community, and to see that return on investment is extraordinary. Sometimes it means that you, as the government, have to take the leap of faith and put some money in before you see results. And that takes real courage, and that's what this council exhibited, real courage in reactivating service with staff who worked around the clock, I might add, to make this happen. So John Pascal and all of the staff who are present here tonight, they worked extremely hard to make this happen. And it pains me to see how many people have been excoriating this experience because they are ignoring the fact that this produced real results for this community. So there's my soapbox comment there. As for the minimum revenue guarantee, I remember the private fundraising efforts that happened to raise that money. And I remember participating in those efforts. I was at one of the wineries where they hosted that fundraiser. So I was very happy to see the community step forward. And given the fact that we have now proven that we have contributed over $30 million in economic development to the area, I'm curious, what is the appetite for the private sector to come together again to put money towards another minimum revenue guarantee? And I don't know who would be the best person to comment on that, but I just want to know, are the supporters of airport service willing to put some money up yet again for a minimum revenue guarantee? Because the city of Salem did not put that money up, and I think it is appropriate, given how much money we've already contributed, what, almost $5 million? We've done our part, in my humble opinion. And so I would love to see whether the community is willing, now that they've proven, now that we've proven that this can work viably economically, is there support from the private sector and all these private donors? And I'll go to the fundraisers again, put me back on the invite list, I'll do my part. But I'm just curious to know, what is the status of getting some support from the community for another MRG?
I'm going to have to be, you know, a little careful what I say because I really don't want to be representing private entities.
Sure.
But I do know that there is a general level of support and enthusiasm with the Fly Salem Organization, with Travel Salem, and with the Chamber of Commerce. I think there was a letter that came in today from the Chamber of Commerce. So I think, I think there is interest and enthusiasm about trying to do this again, but I'm not able to actually in person talk about what efforts they're willing to take. So, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, we've already had discussions. We've been in meetings talking about what that may look like. What we've focused on is a broad-based effort with multiple contributors, both public contributors and private contributors, because I think that's the model that works best. And I don't think, in this environment, we can sit around and wait for a federal grant.
Counselor Varney.
Thank you very much. I had a couple of questions about the minimum revenue guarantee. And by the way, thank you for all the information. That was great. In our staff report, it says that low-cost carriers are seeking an MRG equal to or larger than Salem's original 1.2 average per flight, well, whatever it is. And my question is, in looking at some of the things you said, the increase in fares at PDX, probably increased parking fees, the travel to PDX, why are we continuing to focus on low-cost carriers? And if we were not focusing on just low-cost carriers, would that reduce the minimum revenue guarantee since they would be getting more revenue for those flights?
Those are great questions, and I wish that I had addressed them in the presentation because those are very important. The first piece is that the bar for success with a low-cost carrier is a little bit lower because their cost of operation is lower. So for example, the cost to, from here to Burbank was about $10,000 every time that plane took off, and it had 150 seats to divide that cost over. On a 76-seat airplane from here to Seattle, your cost is going to be about $7,500. So it's only a little bit less than the longer flight, but you have half the number of seats. So you need a much higher fare on that local segment, not taking into account that your fare covers your entire trip. So if we're looking at a regional jet to a hub and then another flight beyond that hub, the overall fare has to be significantly higher for our share of that fare to break even. Because of that, regional carrier revenue guarantee requests currently, I'm working on several, are in the $4 to $5 million range. Two reasons. You're flying two to three times a day, so your cost is way up. Instead of $10,000 or $20,000 twice a week, you're looking at $15,000 each direction every single day if you have two daily flights to a hub. So your cost of operation is significantly higher, your flights are significantly more frequent, and with the connecting mix of traffic, you need a very high fare that would probably be higher than Portland in order to break even. So it all comes down to, what is the cost and what do I have to charge to break even? On a regional carrier, you have to charge significantly more than on a larger aircraft. Because of that, we have talked, and we do continue to talk to regional carriers, we have found limited interest because they don't believe they can price lower than where Portland is priced today and make money.
Yeah. Well, for what you said, I mean, in terms of travel to Portland, parking costs, I mean, if we were charging the same as Portland, I mean, why wouldn't people fly out of Salem?
They would if we charged the same, say it's a connecting flight to San Francisco, if you, and you're going to Denver, right? You're going here to San Francisco to Denver. Portland to Denver has a lot of nonstop flights that, where your seat cost is going to be significantly lower. The airline cost is lower. So if we had the exact same price, the airline would actually lose money on, out of Salem, where they make money out of Portland because you've increased the cost so much. So in doing that, we would need to have a fare considerably higher than Portland for the airline to break even and not use revenue guarantee funds. Where with a low-cost carrier, they can undercut Portland and still make money because their cost is so low.
I just wanted to make one comment. I mean, based on the reporting here, that minimum revenue guarantee subsidized our travelers 75% of the time. And so I'm just thinking, there are a lot of people who have indicated an interest in flying out of Salem, but we're subsidizing those flights, basically. And so that just concerns me. Thanks.
If I may follow that up with a question, do, does every city that a Breeze airline or a low-cost airline flies out of have an MRG?
Not every. Not every. Every city like us. Every city with risk. Our risk is demonstrable now because we did use revenue guarantee funds. Because of that, we've proven that in the startup, we will need to have that fund put together. And so any market that looks similar goes through this. I will say with Breeze, they have done revenue guarantees in dozens upon dozens of communities. They have not left a market that had a revenue guarantee.
And do we know how much that revenue guarantee might be for Salem?
We've had conceptual discussions with several carriers. One discussion that we had that seemed to resonate was a three-year program under which we would have $500,000 available in each year separately. So in year one, the maximum paid would be $500,000. Same in year two, same in year three. That did resonate. So 1.5 million total, but a per-year investment of a half a million dollars. We've had some conversations with some other carriers who have talked about guarantees in the $3 and $4 million range. There are other communities right now. So if you look at the U.S., there are 360 airports that offer an incentive of $500,000 or greater today. 360 airports. That's our competition for air service. There are many communities that have guarantees of $5 million or more available. There are many communities that have rolling guarantees available. Because the service has been successful, they keep rolling that same initial investment over and over. A great example, San Luis Obispo, California, had an initial $2 million guarantee, government-funded guarantee. In 2017, they've used $400,000 of it, and they've got seven new routes since that time. They have 1.6 million remaining in the fund. So when you look at it, an airline is saying, and this is what Avelo did, where is that plane going to make the most money? It's not even about how many people are on the plane. It's the mix of what the fare is and the number of people. And if Community A has $3 million guarantee, Community B, which is Salem, has no guarantee, they forecast exactly the same, you're going to go to A, for sure. So we're caught in almost an arms race of guarantee funding. And to speak to Counselor Brown's point, many communities are realizing they have to go it alone now on these projects. Because the federal grant money that may have been available before has been cut considerably and may not be available in certain communities.
Thank you. You want to follow up on that? And then Counselor Matthews.
So with that line of thinking, and Mr. Director said it, there is some concern that the funding that Congresswoman Salinas helped us with, it is still on the table to be clawed back. Correct?
The money has made it through, you know, the appropriations process, but it has not been obligated yet. So yes, it is entirely possible it could be clawed back if we do not obligate it soon.
Soon meaning that the equipment that belongs to TSA, they could take that back in November. So we have a very short window to make a decision. And I would say it's shorter than yesterday.
Counselor, the longer we take, the more uncertainty there is. You're absolutely correct.
And so, please forgive me, Madam Mayor. So there are quite a few, there are quite a few uncertainties on the table. And I think that's where my concern is, and I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, is that on one hand, I think Counselor Nordike said this, yes, we have made some money. Yet at the same time, we could be losing some money also, regardless of the direction that we want to go. I yield the floor.
Counselor Matthews.
So I guess I want to verify something because I was looking at the 32 million, right? I think that's incredible, that that much economic stimulus was brought into the community. And it's true, what Counselor Nordike said, we don't see those funds as a city necessarily. But I've got to assume there is a version that we do see. So we obviously, if we have passengers coming from Burbank and from Vegas here, and $32 million is being stimulated here, they have to be sleeping somewhere. And we obviously make a TOT tax for anyone that sleeps in a hotel here. And so since Avelo's been here, what has our TOT actually done? Because those are funds that the city actually does receive directly.
Ideally, we'd like to bring Josh down. He may not have an answer on the top of his head. I know Angie Villery from Travel Salem has indicated that TOT funds are up this year. Our revenues are up in the TOT fund. But I would, I'd want to have Josh confirm that.
Good evening. Josh Eggleson, Chief Finance Officer. We can't directly attribute transient occupancy taxes to commercial air service. Chris was kind enough to just share with me. We did see a 9.4% increase year-over-year from the prior year. The previous year was 3.7. So there is a marked increase. But again, we can't directly attribute it to commercial air service.
Okay. Were there other things that we did as a community that brought a whole bunch of travelers in that would have stayed and seen that kind of increase?
No, but often we do see fluctuations, either in the rate or nights that are occupied.
Gotcha.
Counselor Tugend.
Yeah, and maybe I'd just note on page 16 of the Volair Consulting Packet, kind of counterintuitively, in 2025. And I know maybe those numbers, Josh, that you're referring to, go all the way back to August of '24, July of '24. But this year, from January, February, March, and April, seemed to be the lowest numbers of passengers coming in. I mean, overall, I really like this page. This is the page we like, how many people are coming to the city. But can you explain those last four months, why the numbers dropped kind of off a cliff after that December?
Yeah, we had fewer flights scheduled. We only had two flights a week during that period. We had a higher number of flights in the other periods.
So it's just the drop in flights? But then that kind of is a counter data point to the TOT increase over that same time? So maybe they're not as associated as we think.
Go ahead.
So was the 9% increase, were those just over the last four months that we saw that 9% increase? Or was that over? Okay. So an indicator of four months probably isn't necessarily going to impact a whole year or multiple year overall increase.
And just for the record, that was year-over-year, right? The answer, okay. Counselor Nishioka.
Thank you. So thank you both for a great presentation. And I really want to thank Mr. Bechtel for a great report. It was very full, and I really appreciated it. I did send several questions and had some answered, or had them answered, and I may not get to them. One thing that I wanted to find out about is... So in our community, we have several that are frustrated by the amount that the general fund has supported the airport. And reviewing this information, and though we haven't got to sources of revenue yet, so we will be seeing that. But one of my concerns or wanting to understand is, it seems that for a while, if we do not seek to bring in another commercial carrier, we're still going to be tapping in. The airport will still be tapping in to the general fund. And it would be kind of nice to know what that is. And then to understand that if we were to lose the TSA equipment and then in 16 months started looking for a carrier, how much money we might need to reestablish that. Trying to balance what we've already invested and what we will still have to use from the general fund, and then what we may have to invest to build it back up so we'll have the opportunity for the airport to be more self-sufficient. The goal that I've been driving for is for the airport to be self-sufficient.
Exactly, Counselor. I guess what I would tell you is, based on our calculations that we've just been, just made this past week, the airport fund is seeing some challenges no matter which way we go. If we continue with a minimal amount of air, commercial air service, we will still need assistance from the general fund until we were to reach that level of flights, the 12 flights a week. Even if we were to step away from commercial air service, the airport fund is still looking at, you know, not meeting all of its obligations. So even though the general fund would not have the pressure on it that it does now, the airport fund is still deficient, even without commercial air service. So that is why, and one of the reasons we want to have a second half of this discussion tonight involving development at the airport and things, is we still need to find other revenue sources or expand these other revenue sources so that we can create some sustainability in the airport fund. We have to look at landing fees. We have to look at how we can develop hangars and properties. Those are things that we have to look at regardless of whether we have air service or not. Another thing I'd add is, you know, right now, we've kind of put a hold on staffing at the airport for like the next six months. Because we feel like the next six months are going to determine a lot. We're either going to be moving forward with an MRG or we will be waiting to hear on our application for an MRG. We may or may not have a letter of intent by then. But after six months, I think we'll have to make some hard decisions if we do not have a letter of intent or more certainty about commercial air service. We may have to look at transferring some positions from the airport to possibly other positions in public works or at the city to hold those people with that expertise within the city organization, but have them do other things where we might have vacancies so that we could bring them back to the airport if we had service. So those are some things we could look at doing when we start getting beyond that six-month window and whether we have certainty or uncertainty at that point.
Yeah, Counselor Tugend, did you have a follow-up? Oh, wait. Let's apologize.
No, if there's a follow-up, if someone has a follow-up, they should ask it.
Go ahead, Dr. Brown.
A follow-up to Counselor Nishioka's question. So the presentation, yes, I think we all love the presentation. I think what would be helpful would be to weigh the presentation along with the risk of what could happen in the next six months with also a proposal of some ideas of how to make more income with the development of those hangars. I think it was this spring where some of us, this past spring, we went to tour the facility, and we saw the potential of what could happen. Do we know when counsel can receive some kind of presentation as to how we can develop?
That is the second half of our presentation tonight.
Oh, good. Oh, good. I was sitting here struggling for a second. I was like, are we going to miss that?
That's a great segue, Counselor.
Okay. Counselor Nishioka.
Actually...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Interim Secret Manager Non-Gary would like to speak. Thank you. I'll sit just for a second. So Mark, if you can just kind of talk about part of the, you know, Mark and I were having discussion last week about the airport. Having a commercial air service also opens it up for more federal grants. And that can be used towards infrastructure costs for the airport. So then you don't have to pay out of general fund for those infrastructure costs. Can you just kind of talk about it for a few seconds on that, please?
Sure. One of the real big benefits, and if you remember back to my presentation, which I can't get, well, I guess I can get to it, okay? Nope, I guess I can't. Okay, anyway. If you remember back to the, that positive return on investment with the capital funding, when we were a general aviation airport only, we were only qualifying for about $150,000 a year in federal entitlement funds, which was enough to pretty much crack seal the runways and hold the place together. Once we started meeting that employment threshold, that 10,000 employments a year, that qualified us for 1.15 million more per year in federal funding. That then triggers things like Congressman Salinas looking for earmarks and putting together funding packages. Now, I realize that the politics has changed at the federal level. There's different party in charge. I don't know if Congresswoman Salinas has the same sway that she may have had in the past. But either way, it does, it does create a critical mass of, once you start getting that federal funding in, it takes pressure off of the airport fund. It takes pressure off of the general fund to do capital improvement projects at the airport. And one thing we can also do is, we can charge a passenger fee at a certain point. For example, with Avelo, once their first two years were up, we could start charging a capital fee per passenger. It would have to have been very small. But even a buck a passenger is a buck a passenger to our, to our capital fund. So it, things like that, if you have air service long enough, you start gaining that momentum, and you can start gaining access to more funding. You can generate your own capital funding. The hard part is always operating funds. And we all know that from, from all of us here in the, at the city. It's easier to get capital funding than operating funding. But that's, I hope I've addressed your question.
If I may follow up with that quickly. I was at a conference this weekend, and of mayors, and the topic came up about emergency management. It's my feeling that the Salem Airport is really important in terms of our emergency management and that these kinds of, this kind of progress helps us to be better equipped in the event of a major problem. So can you speak to that just a little bit?
Sure. And you will see in the next half of the presentation, we talk about our airport resiliency study that's going to get underway here in the next year. City of Salem, Salem Airport is one of several key relief airports in the event of a major Cascadia seismic event or some kind of tsunami situation on the coast. We are designated to be a place where civilian and military aircraft can come inland. Those supplies are taken off. They may be taken to the, to the fairgrounds or remain at the airport and then dispersed wherever they're needed, in the Lamont Valley or in the coast range. So one of the things the state, or the Oregon Department of Aviation is very interested in is making sure that our runways have the ability to withstand those heavier military aircraft and civilian aircraft. So that's a study that we'll be looking at doing regardless of commercial air service. Something we'll be looking at doing here within the next year is having that study.
Thank you, sir. It seems that we're all out of the building because we're seismically upgrading the Civic Center. We'd want to be ready at the airport, so. Counselor Nishioka, thank you for your patience.
Thank you again. So back to the page of positive return on investment. Mr. Bechtel, you have here that in fiscal year 2026, we're to be receiving 1.15 million. And again, in 2027, that's not talking about the one that Salinas, that, that might get clawed back. Are we pretty confident that both of these will be coming in? Or is there, are we at risk?
Well, we've earned that money. So according to the FAA, we're due that money. Is that correct, Mr. Aaron? Yeah, what's that?
Federal law.
Yeah, federal, federal law says that we get it. So we've earned, we've earned that money with our employments.
All right, thank you. I think my next question might be for Mr. Penning. Can you tell us, so again, getting back to the general fund that has needed to support staffing and other resources for the airport, can you help us understand if most cities, and I mean even large cities, require tax dollars or basically general fund dollars to support their airports? And if so, is that, am I expecting too much to finally see the Salem Airport pay for itself? So I think you understand my question.
It is exceptionally rare for a regional airport to not have any tax funding supporting its office. operations, period. Whether it's in Illinois, North Carolina, or in Oregon, many airport authorities levy property taxes. Peoria Airport in Illinois does over 2 million passengers a year and has a property tax that everyone pays to support the operation because of that number of passengers, that airport is not self-sustaining. It is the goal of every airport in this country, because of the way they're structured as enterprise owns, to be self-sustaining, and there are some that get there. Port of Pasco and Tri-Cities Airport in Washington is completely self-sustaining without any taxpayer funding at all. So it can be done, but it's very rare.
Counsel Matthews, did you have something or did you have a follow-up?
Just one last time, and I'm sorry. Again, as Mayor said, I too recognize the need for our airport to stay running smoothly, have the taxiways and our runways, and thankfully, we've just also been approved for that second runway to be included in funding. And so I feel it's quite important to keep our airport running smoothly and efficiently and, or I guess maybe I should say structurally ready for emergencies. And I also feel that for communities our size, airports are part of our critical need, our infrastructure needs, and yet at the same time, it's hard when we have general fund dollars sort of bleeding in support of that because it will take some time before we see more airline carriers coming and then finally making that number that we're, that we need. So anyway, it was just, thank you. Some more statements.
Counsel Matthews.
So I had two questions, if that's okay, but first I wanted to clarify. So you said 1.15, we already earned kind of both of those from...
Federal law says you're entitled to it.
So obviously, we've lost our air service at this point, and so we won't have that coming for the upcoming...
You'll go back to 150,000 a year.
In the event that we were to have another airline come to this area and continue to meet this 10,000, we could expect to continue to receive this 1.5 or 1.15, is that right?
Yeah, we're covered for this year.
Right.
If we can get an airline in here, say by next summer, and we can get 10,000 before December of '26, then we would be covered for the following.
We would see that back. I guess my other question, well, so this 2% of passengers used Avelo, I wasn't clear, I probably should have asked this earlier, I wasn't clear if this is 2% of passengers used Avelo from Salem that were flying, as opposed to PDX at a 72, that were flying the same route as far as two Vegas and two Burbank, or is this in total numbers?
It's the entire market, and it's both in and out.
Okay, that does make a little more sense why 2% makes a bigger deal because when I'm sitting here thinking, we're getting 2% of the Vegas flights, this seems terrible.
No, you had almost 20%, in the LA basin.
Okay, so that is a substantial number then, okay.
Counsel Tygen.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Penning, again, thank you for the presentation. I think as we discuss this, I'm always interested to know sort of what's unique to Salem and also like what our competition looks like. I think your presentation revealed to me that we're not just in competition with Portland or Redmond or Eugene, we're in competition with Hartford and it looks like the entire East Coast. So I'm curious just in terms of, and I think Counsel Nishiyoka asked a little bit about it, but how did a, I'll start on the West Coast, but how did a city airport like Eugene and Redmond turn around in two days and offer incentives to Breeze Airlines? What had they already put in place to make that happen? I Googled their city council meetings after this happened. I didn't see any decision made by a city council. I didn't see one made by a port council. So what was in place that they were able to make that decision on that quick of a turnaround?
There were two big things. In their favor, they were very high on the revenue per segment list, which was most important to Breeze, proving how much revenue was available each time they took off. The second piece is both have standard incentive programs that are constantly in place for any service that lapses. So they have passed a standard program through their governance that says, we've got X number of dollars available for any route that's not served or these specific routes that are high priority. And that's, Eugene has also done a great job with private investment. They landed Southwest because the private community put in seven figures of their own money for Southwest. So they both have private investment and they both have standard incentive programs that are constantly in place and funded.
Which are budgeted through airport revenue or where does the funding come from in order to say that?
It can't come from airport, so airports are very limited in what airport revenue can be used for. Can be used for marketing, can be used for fee waivers, that's it, under federal law. Any other funding has to come from other sources within the governing agency. In the case of Eugene, it's the City of Eugene who passed their standard incentive program and funds it. And in other cases, you know, it can be an authority or property tax or whatever that goes to it.
So I guess then let's shift over to the East Coast. So the East Coast, by your presentation, those flights are 2.3 times more profitable per hour in the air, or whatever the metric was. But it also seems like those flights are, they're not just more profitable, they're more subsidized. The governing bodies on the East Coast are offering more tax incentives, more tax dollars to them than folks on the West Coast. Is that just like generally safe to assume?
It goes market by market. It's an incredibly uneven playing field out there. And so a state can get rid of its fuel tax for a new, you know, that's 50 cents for every gallon. That reduces the cost of operation in such a way that the revenue on the plane is naturally going to be more profitable. And the State of Oregon, we don't have that option. We, State of Oregon has been talking about increasing the fuel tax, makes it even more unattractive. So the bottom line is, all over the United States, there are different incentive programs, some state, some local, that we compete against being here in Salem, that we have no control over, and that make it more difficult for us to recruit without developing the revenue guarantee.
Last one, I suppose, though, that you can't in two days turn around a new minimum revenue guarantee unless you have one of those rolling ones you talked about, like the airlines aren't using them?
There was a community that was able to do it in two days. I cannot discuss the details of how it happened because it went through a private economic development corporation, but it was turned around in two days.
Okay, so what seems more realistic, though, for this community, which is at a disadvantage because we use the MRG we had, we don't have a standard package that we offer airlines, we don't have the same property revenue, property tax revenues that folks on the East Coast have. I'm looking for a solution that would allow airlines to know, okay, this is what Salem might be able to offer. And I think we were talking a lot about the MRG, but the other thing that I'm hearing is that standard landing fee discounts, airline fuel discounts, that sort of thing is also part of it as well.
Very common, virtually every airport offers two years of fee waivers for any new route. I mean, more than 500 airports in the US and over 1,500 around the world. What I would say, Oregon is at a disadvantage relative to other states, and I didn't include this in the presentation, but it's an important point. A number of states have ongoing revenue guarantee programs for their regional airports, Kansas, Wyoming, New Mexico, just a small collection, where the airports can go to the state and say, I need $4 million for Breeze, and the Department of Transportation has a fund, in some cases, an ongoing fund of 7 to 9 to 10 million dollars a year, where they can continually offer revenue guarantees. And the State of Oregon does not have a program. There are nine states that do that on a continuing basis. I've used them in many of my markets to develop revenue guarantees. The State of Oregon could be very competitive with a program like that because we have so many regional airports. The state did used to have a program called Connect Oregon, we have to go back 15, 20 years ago. We used it to get service in North Bancus Bay. But we're at a disadvantage not only from the local level and also from federal, but there are other states that are much more aggressive than Oregon is at growing air service.
Okay, I just would close by saying, I really appreciate you drawing the picture for the competitive landscape. I mean, to get, we've gotten a lot of comments from our public about how much they appreciate having an airline, what it means to them, and that we should just go back into the closet and flip on the switch that allows airline to come back. And what I'm hearing you say is that the market is competitive, getting more competitive, and it's not really completely within this body to just say, yes, more airline and get airline.
Correct, and I would note, the airport is certified and open to any carrier that wants to operate there right now. Any carrier can announce service tomorrow on its own. We don't have carriers banging down the door to begin service because there are so many risk-free places to put planes.
Counsel Brown had a follow-up for that.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Tygen, Madam Mayor. So on that same line of thinking, it sounds like to me, and you said it perfectly, that there is an unfair playing field, and there is no way that we can incentivize this to where it works in our favor.
You can because you have a market that has shown it was nearing profitability and that it will be long-term profitable, and some of the other markets that have large guarantees are never going to graduate beyond a subsidized air service. Salem will. Salem will. What the airlines that are growing fastest are looking for is long-term, they want to know five years from now, am I going to make money? And that really was Avelo's point at the beginning, too, until they made more money in the East. So we have the advantage of being able to go to them and say, look at these numbers, look at how well we did, especially as it ramped up, where other communities won't. But we have to be able to cover that beginning piece because we've proven that in the beginning, we'll need the funding to cover the rough months.
Right, and it's that part, it's like in the beginning that you just said.
Yep.
It sounds like to me, the other states that you mentioned, I think you mentioned there were nine of them, so they couldn't get that help without the state stepping in to help them.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, here we go again, which tells me, we can't get across the finish line without the help of, A, legislators, and then B, if Madam Governor is not at the table. Because in order to make this profitable for all of us, the state also has to see how it makes them money, too. And currently, since we do not have, you know, the policy in place because there's a special session that she now has to have, everything is, it's in the air. It's a complete toss-up. And please forgive me if this sounds pretty, you know, cruel or cold because it's not to you, but in essence, when it comes to us, the city, making more money, we have to have legislation, we have to have that help. Because until we have that, we are pouring funds into a bucket that has holes in it, A, and then B, even if we plug those holes, there is no guarantee that the bucket is ever going to be full and running over because we do not have a way to guarantee that we're never going to take money out of the General Fund. Oh, Madam Mayor, I give it back to you. Thank you.
Deep breath. Counselor Vang, we haven't heard from you yet, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a comment after listening to everybody's discussion and just kind of letting my constituents and my, and the public know kind of what's going through my mind. But first and foremost, this pressure to, and this really quick timeline for the city to act on really makes me hesitate to say yes to anything. I think that's partly because of growing up, it's just if it's, if it's putting pressure on you and you try to make a decision, you know, maybe it takes, it's, maybe it takes some time to pause and think about it. So that's the first thing that's coming into my mind, but I think Counsel Nordike rightfully pointed out that we already have the infrastructure at the airport in place. We've worked really hard to get up to this point, and I would hate to see it go away. And I think for commercial air to come back to Salem, I would need to know how much the private sector is willing to step up to incentivize, whether that's through minimum revenue guarantee or other ways, to get an airline to say yes to Salem again because I think it takes a coalition. I think the city has already done what it can to help incentivize an airline to come, and we need that coalition to help us get to the finish line or as close to that as we can. And so that's just kind of my thinking and kind of what I am taking away from the discussion today, and so I just wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vang. Oh, sure. Counsel Nishiyoka, you've waited once again, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Again, I hate that I'm taking up so much time, but I have so many questions. I'm not sure exactly who this question would be for, but with all that we're learning and all that we are faced with, a question I have is if we have, if the city has learned anything with the agreement we made with Avelo, and if there would be changes in any other agreements, should we have, find the funding and move forward? So I'm just curious is how, I think that we may have learned some lessons from it, but at the same time, we need to be competitive, so can you speak to that?
Absolutely. I would say our agreement with Avelo was as simple as it could possibly be. We had a target revenue per segment that was locked in for the full agreement. We had, you know, if they didn't operate, if they canceled, we were not on the hook for any of those flights, so we were protected there, and both sides had the ability to end the agreement should they want to. I would say that's highly standard. Every, every negotiation with every carrier is different. We don't have a lot of cards because of the uneven playing field. I think that's important. So we do not have the ability to dictate many terms. We try to do things to protect those who are investing in the revenue guarantee on our end, and that is locking in the cost, that is locking in performance measures to ensure that the flights operate, those kind of things. Beyond that, we can ask for the world, but we will likely receive pushback on many things that we ask for.
Thank you.
I would like to, it's been requested that we take a five-minute break, so let's do that and we'll come right back. All right, everybody, we are back at work here. Thank you for the break. Let's get back to business. Did we leave anyone out when we adjourned for a brief recess? Did you, Counsel Tygen?
No.
No? Anyone else? Anything to ask? Counsel Matthews?
Well, I really just wanted to, I guess there were two things. So the first thing, I think you said it early in your presentation of really no one should go it alone, and I think almost every counselor has talked about at some point, the business community stepping up to kind of have investment here, and I guess I want to be a little more broad and say, and we talked a little about the state, but I also want to know, like, have we, there, $32 million of economic stimulus is fantastic, however, that is regional stimulus, and that also means that county, as both Polk County and Marion County have had a big impact in that, right? They've received a lot of that impact. And so have they been approached about being partners in this?
I can admit, yes, Marion is positive about it and I think is likely to be a partner.
Okay.
I'll add to that. I did have a meeting and it sounds very positive from the county. They're very interested in being helpful. I can't say that they've made that ultimate decision yet, but it is feeling positive.
Has Polk County also been approached? Because I know we advertise ourselves as a big winery area, and wineries are a lot in Polk County, and so I'm sure some of that stimulus has been to their benefit.
Yeah, go ahead.
To our knowledge, Polk County has not indicated any interest at this point. Not to say that they might not, but I don't think they've been... Not to say that they might not, but I don't think they've been communicated with yet.
Okay, okay. All right. I mean, I, sorry, there was, I mean, I have one other thing I was gonna, one thing I'm learning as a counselor is to try and give better direction, right? I think, we talk a lot, and ultimately, in the end, I don't know that we always do, including myself, especially myself, giving actual outcome and objection and direction to staff. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about that, but if you have something else before I get to that.
Counselor Brown, did you have something else before?
My only thought was, did we approach ODOT? Are they a part of the conversation yet?
Oregon Department of Transportation?
Yes, sir.
No. It'd be Oregon Department of Aviation. And they are giving us capital grants a lot. I mean, they are helping us match the federal monies that we get. So we're getting considerable attention from Oregon Department of Aviation with capital matching funds. I don't believe they have the ability to give us MRG funds in their current budget. I don't believe so.
And that's where I was going. I don't think they do either. So is there any conversation with Madam Governor to be a partner in this at all?
You know, that's a question for Angie Villery to answer. I have heard that there's an interest in getting, you know, time with the governor, but that would be through Travel Salem or, you know, but not through the city at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Counselor Brown. Counselor Quinn?
I just wondered if SEDCOR is involved or can be involved in some way. I mean, they're, that's what they do, right, is economic development?
I would say back in 2015, when I was acting Urban Development Director, the answer would have been yes. There would have been grant money available, but my understanding from Kristin Rutherford is that's not something that they have available currently, so through SEDCOR. But we could look into that so we could get a more definite. I did, I did ask Kristin if there was any funding available through SEDCOR, and she came back that there was not funding available for an MRG through SEDCOR. That was her response.
Okay, Counselor Matthews, thank you for your patience. Oh, Counselor Quinn?
I guess a follow-up. I'm just curious how Kristin would be involved with SEDCOR. I mean, can we ask SEDCOR?
I believe she asked the SEDCOR representative. I asked her if she could ask SEDCOR if they had any money that might be able to help us with an MRG, and her response back was that they did not have any funding available to help with an MRG. So that's the extent of my knowledge of the conversation.
Hold that thought, Counselor Matthews. Counselor Barney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for Mr. Penning. I really appreciated all the information you provided about other airports all over the place, and you mentioned that they're almost all supported by tax dollars, that they don't support themselves. So my question is, are how, not how many of them, but are any of them supported by larger regional taxing districts?
Some, yes. It's very common in the Midwest to have multi-county taxing districts, primarily property tax districts. We do not, well, I won't say, we do see that too in the West. In Washington State, most airports are operated by the port districts that are multi-county, and the regional airports heavily lean on the taxing authority of those port districts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Barney. If there isn't anyone else, I'm going to go to Counselor Matthews.
All right, so kind of mentioned before, I'm really trying to get better at being a counselor, and part of that is trying to be more clear about what I'm hoping to see. And so, so my suggestion is, is we don't just walk out of here like some of our meetings where we kind of leave staff guessing on what to do next. And, and one of the things I feel like hasn't been clear to me based on the conversation tonight, is exactly what it, what is it that it would take to actually get to having an airline service here from an MRG perspective? I've heard some different numbers, kind of a 1.5 million out there, I've heard other numbers other times. And so I guess my suggestion would be, and kind of what I have here is a motion, and so, so if I can, I'd like to move to that we direct staff to engage with any interested airline for the purpose of clarifying what terms they would be looking for to begin commercial air service in Salem and what routes. That'd be my motion that I'd like to make.
I'd second that.
And again, the objective here is just to try to get clarification on whether, what we would really be looking at so that we can actually run the dollars and cents on if it makes sense.
Anything else to your motion?
That's it.
Any discussion on that? Counselor Brown?
So with that motion, Counselor Matthews, are we, like, when are we expecting the staff to bring that back? Are we putting a two-week timeframe on that, or a month, or what?
That is a great question. I mean, I would hope soon, but I'll defer.
In talking with Mr. Penning here, I think it'd be difficult for us to put an exact timeline on this. We, a lot of it depends on our availability to discuss things with different airlines, and then to see how an MRG would start to gel as far as contributions and, yeah, go ahead.
I think we can work as quickly as possible, but airlines often hold the cards pretty close. We'll have hints, but we will not have a definitive number. We can come up with a solid number that we feel comfortable will get the job done. The timeline would be the difficult part. I would say right now, if you were to ask me what the target is, it is that $500,000 in funding each year for a three-year period. That's our target today that we need to try and achieve. But that doesn't guarantee service. What we will do and what we can do is work to narrow down with the carriers what's going to get the job done.
Follow that. Counselor Brown?
And to follow that, if it's $500,000 per year for three years, in your own expertise, what number do you think it needs to be to be a guarantee?
So if you want service in March, we need to be in the $3 to $4 million range.
In March?
If you want service to start in March.
Okay, so, so if we wanted service to start in March, we will have to ask TSA to give us an extension for the equipment so they don't pick it up in November?
Well, we would, we would work to have a letter of intent from the carrier before then, then the TSA will hold the equipment in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So thank you for the conversation. So we do have a council meeting on September 8th. Is that a reasonable time for us to come back with some information on this, for the council to have further conversation?
Yes, we, I won't have a name of an airline, and this is what they say, but I will have a number.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Nordike?
I welcome the motion and the opportunity to explore further. I was under the impression, we've been actively courting more airlines this entire time. However, there is a benefit to having a motion so that everyone watching at home knows exactly what we're doing. And I know we've talked about efforts to court other airlines, but I think it's appropriate to memorialize this into a formal motion and to see what information can be brought back to September 8th. At this point, I'm interested in gathering more information. I'm not interested at this time in committing general fund dollars to a minimum revenue guarantee. In my opinion, the city has already taken a huge risk, and we have already invested millions of dollars in this airport. We have our skin in the game. And now that we have proven there's over $30 million in investment in this community, whether it's the Polk side, the Marion County side, frankly, I'm sure Yamhill County benefited. Have you been to the wineries in Yamhill County? No offense to the local ones, but good God, they're amazing. Anyway, I would be interested in supporting the motion to see what more information we can gather. But I am very jealously guarding what general fund dollars we have and how it is used. I do find it fascinating to understand further that there are a great many airports that have never become self-sufficient, and that they rely on pots of money that do not exist in our area. So anyway, I'm interested in exploring further, and I appreciate Counselor Matthews taking upon himself to help us make sure the staff know where we're going and why we're doing what we're doing. I'm in favor of that, and Counselor Matthews, you're not the only one out here who could benefit from being a little more clear. So thank you so much. I appreciate it because I need that too. Thank you.
interim city manager?
So I think from a timing perspective, I think there are two things that have to happen. One is to start that conversation or further the conversation with the airlines to talk about what that MRG looks like and kind of a ballpark. And also, this gives us also three weeks to work with the community partners to see what kind of support can we receive on the MRG side of it. So I think September 8th, when we come back, maybe to give you, give the council both of those informations. Information probably is helpful to give us further direction on this.
Any further discussion? Okay, we had a motion and a second. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Aye.
Counselor Nishioke?
Aye.
Counselor Matthews?
Aye.
Counselor Quinn?
Aye.
Counselor Brown?
Aye.
Counselor Vang?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Barney?
Aye.
Mayor Hoi?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Bechdod, did you have something else to, we have another presentation.
We do, but it's considerably shorter.
Good. I'd have to make popcorn if it was longer.
All right, as soon as I'm sure that I actually have, there we go. Okay.
May I just interrupt briefly? Mr. Penning, are you leaving us now, or are you part of this presentation also?
I'm not part of the presentation, but I was going to stay in case you had any other questions.
Well, thank you for doing that, and thank you for sitting out the Wilsonville traffic to get here. Appreciate you.
There won't be any going back.
Yeah, that's the truth. Thank you, Mark.
Mayor and Councilors, we're going to talk about some ongoing efforts at the airport, and it all does come back to the health of the airport fund. One of the issues that we brought to you back in February at a council, at a council work session, was an update on the airport master plan. Since that time, we've held three planning advisory committee meetings, and we're heading towards a public open house in the fall of this year. But the area that you may have, you now may be aware of, the area that was of previous concern and contention was previously the FAA had indicated that our secondary runway, 1634, may not have qualified in the future for federal funding for rehabilitation or reconstruction or modification. And that was creating an issue with our airport community because that is a heavily used secondary runway, and it does help the lighter aircraft deal with crosswinds. So thankfully, the FAA under direction has issued a determination that our secondary runway can now remain federally funded into the future under the classification of a legacy crosswind runway. So that has now removed a considerable amount of concern and contention in the master plan process that allows us to regain some momentum and move forward with that. So we are looking forward to completing the master plan either in the winter or spring of 2026. We have some pending airport construction projects. One is going to be brought to you at your next meeting on August 25th, and that is an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Aviation, where they are going to provide us about $154,000 in pavement maintenance funding, free of charge, to the city of Salem. So that is a good deal. We don't have to match that money or come up with any funding. It's part of ODOT's ongoing pavement management program for airports. So we just need to have an IGA in place so they can do the work this September. Another project, if you see on the, on the diagram there that has the little golden triangle, is a federally funded project to build what's called a hard stand. That's basically a big concrete parking pad for heavy aircraft, for airliner aircraft, so that they don't damage the pavement. Even in the 22 months we've had here with commercial air service, you can start to see the rutting in the pavement where the aircraft has been parking. So that is a project that is mainly federally funded with some state and city share. Also, some additional security fencing in the ramp area to augment our security. Another large project that you're going to see is our Taxiway Alpha North pavement rehabilitation project. We have received $538,000 to begin design and approvals for that, and that's that yellow rectangular area there you see on the north end of Taxiway Alpha. That is, again, mostly federally funded with some state and local match. Later on in this decade, in 26 or 27 calendar years, we hope to see about $6.7 million in pavement rehabilitation on that taxiway. That funding is all due to that entitlement funding increase from having commercial air service. So that's just, that project right there is something that, that commercial air service got us. We talked about the seismic resiliency study previously. It's a $150,000 study, again, mainly funded through the state of Oregon with a city match to begin either late this year or early next year. The airport terminal plan, which is the Congressman Salinas earmark, the 1.1 million, there will be a local match that will most likely have some state and then some city component to it. Probably won't exceed about $55,000. And that project would begin in 2026 for the planning, design, permitting, and clearances. Again, if we have commercial air service in place by that time, when that work is done, then we can go ahead and ask for more federal money for construction. And then Salem's air traffic control tower is going to be replaced and relocated to the other side of the airport, to the east side of the airport, and it's going to be done through the Federal Aviation Administration. At their cost, they will manage the project. It is a multimillion-dollar project. It is their new sustainable air traffic control tower. It's made of some sustainable materials and is very cost and energy efficient. So we don't know exactly what year that'll happen. I think there's like 31 other towers being constructed by the FAA, and we're in that list somewhere. But again, that's, that is great. If you've seen how old our tower is, this is, this is good news. I think some of you on council remember, we purchased the former Hertz Car Sales property. It now has a more official sounding name. It is the Airport Business Administration Center, or ABAC for short. We purchased it for the airport to, for a number of reasons, to provide space for future airport administrative offices if and when we were to expand and renovate the terminal again. It was to serve as a future ground transportation and car rental center, and also the secondary building, which is a covered service building, someplace where we could store airport equipment. And then at the time, we felt a need to make sure we had plenty of parking. So that's why we purchased the property. Since then, knowing that we need to take our time a little bit on how that moves forward, we are leasing 40% of it to the Salem Fire Department for their EMS program. we are leasing 40% of it to the Salem Fire Department for their EMS program. 40% of it is, of the floor space has been reserved for future administrative offices for the airport staff. However, we are now looking for a short-term lease tenant for the next three to five to seven years, knowing that that's about how long it'll take before we can actually expand the Airport Terminal. So, let's try to find some revenue in the meantime for that, for that space. Also, the service building, we are in negotiations with another tenant and we are nearing final negotiations with that tenant. Our goal is to have enough lease money to cover the debt service. We purchased that property at 1.84 million through a loan from the utility fund, the city's utility fund, $211,000 a year for 10 years debt service. These leases would then cover that debt service. One of the big issues that draws a lot of attention is where are we with our hangar development and development of commercial and industrial properties? Currently, the airport has 117 aircraft hangars that it leases the ground to. So, if you want to have an aircraft hangar, you lease the ground from the airport and you build your structure. We also have 12 commercial or industrial tenants on the airport property. One thing that's important is the FAA must approve all development inside what we call the airport fence. So, that, those developments must be approved. They go through a review process for that. We have about 24 acres available for aircraft hangar development. And at this point, I'm going to skip ahead here and show you a map of the developable properties at the airport. They're numbered and some of them are uniquely suited for aircraft hangar development. Others are better suited for commercial industrial development. The prime area is the area that I would call the southwest hangar area. That'd be this area right here. This is the area where we have leases in place already and reservations for hangar lots. The other areas will require a little more time and effort to develop. Lot number one, here at the very east side, and I just lost my cursor, here we go, lot number one, is probably the next best area to develop for hangars. And then, the other areas are becoming, are actually a little better suited for industrial commercial development. There are some infill lots available within the current hangar areas. So, we do have, like I said, 24 acres available for developing hangars. And then, we have about 46 acres available for commercial industrial development on airport-owned property. A little bit of that area for industrial development, if you look over here, on the very right side of your screen, on the south side of Airway Drive, you will see a lot here. And that is seven acres that we are leasing to the Watt EV Group. And they are developing a EV tractor-trailer charging station and transfer station. So, you either come in with your electric-powered tractor-trailer and you either sit and charge or you trade it for another tractor-trailer that's already charged. And that is, that is a facility that should be moving forward towards construction here soon.
Mark, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just for curiosity's sake, and some who don't serve on the Airport Advisory Commission might not know, where is the new tower going to be located?
Sure. If you go back over here to space number one, this area right here, that little rectangle that's hashed, that is where the new tower is going.
Great. Thank you for that.
So, if we move on to the area that is kind of most likely to develop quickly, it is the southwest hangar area. And these area, these lots here, we either have leases or reservations on them. This area here also has leases and reservations on them. And this area, we're starting to see interest. So, we have a lot of interest for hangar development. The challenge is that we have a few constraints that we're dealing with. One is just infrastructure. Not all of these hangar lots are shovel-ready, ready to go with infrastructure. Some need additional stormwater infrastructure installed. Some need all of the underground utilities installed. It just depends on which area of lots. We also just discovered, or I should say Mosaic Development's engineers discovered through some sampling PFAS chemical compounds on the corner of this far lot here, again, right here. Can you all see that with my cursor? Okay. We've engaged the services of Apex Engineers to do further sampling and studies at the airport so we can determine the extent of PFAS chemicals and how they relate to the development process. But our focus is to try to find ways to get the infrastructure in place and to find a way to move forward through this PFAS study. And so, that's largely what we're dealing with. We are actively marketing these properties. Hangar sites are marketed through a number of methods, from the airport's website to the Willamette Valley listing, multiple listing service for lease signs on the property, and also a lot of word-of-mouth advertising through our fixed-based operator, our tenant network at the airport, flight schools, aviation directories, and local interest groups. Our commercial industrial site listings are also listed similarly and those details are available for them as well. So, with that, that's the end of my presentation for the evening. We can take any more questions or discussion you want on, on a future airport development.
Thank you, Mark. I believe Counselor Brown has a question.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just two questions this time, not 52, but only two. The first one is, you mentioned the stormwater developments, everything for those hangars, the more development. Do we pay for that or does the person who's going to lease pay for those?
Yes and yes. We, we can try to, the more we provide, the less the tenant has to provide. However, there are some things that the tenant will provide as part of their site design. One of the challenges is the FAA would like us to infiltrate as much of the stormwater as possible. Because if you puddle it and pool it, detain, you know, detain it, that creates a wonderful place for waterfowl. Aircraft and waterfowl don't mix. And so, the FAA, you know, is very strong about us infiltrating that stormwater. This area has a very high water table and so it's still influenced by Mill Creek. And so, that, therein lies the challenge. And if you want some more engineering discussion of that, I can bring Rick Barnes up to discuss it.
Good evening, Council. Rick Barnes, Assistant City Engineer. Did that answer your question? We can talk about engineering all night if you'd like, but I think most of us would not.
And I can assure you, we can definitely talk. They may not appreciate me asking you all this question, but we can definitely talk all night. Yeah, if you could go a little bit more in-depth on that. And the reason I'm asking is because I know there are some challenges that are out there. When we went for a tour earlier this spring, my eyes were enlightened. But I think I'm leaning into the cost that that's going to require on a potential person that wants to lease versus how much the FAA is really demanding of us.
So, we had the benefit of constructing a site across the street, the Construction Waste Processing and Transfer Facility, but I think we renamed that, didn't we? The Waste Processing Facility. To how to develop a site, basically in that same neck of the woods. And so, we've taken that information and we have looked into what's going to be required for water quality on these, on these type of sites. We kind of came up with a number and it's significant. Stormwater treatment for the one area that Mark was showing is, could be in the lines of $700,000 to be able to do water quality detention if infiltration is possible. So, it's not a small dollar amount.
Right. And just one follow-up, it's a little bit different. But as we look for, you know, potential folks to lease, have we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce?
That would be a question I would give back to Mark.
We actually have considerable interest in our inventory of lots. We, what we're trying to do is get these clients through the development process and start getting them to where their leases are generating money for us, property taxes for the general fund. So, yes, our emphasis is to get them through the process, get construction underway. That is our total focus right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor.
Counselor Nishiyoka?
Thank you. Don't go away, Mark. So, my question, you mentioned that some of these sites that there's interest in or already has, they're already underway, that we're needing to put in, what I'm going to say, systems development such as the infrastructure for sewer and water for these sites. Is that because they're leasing the land from us and so they don't need to contribute to those costs? That's the first question.
Well, again, we can, we can work it two ways. We can, we can find a way to fund that infrastructure. There's a little bit of money left in the Fairview Urban and Rural District to help with that. But the more we make those lots shovel-ready, the more of the lease money we can keep. Because if we make the developer do it, then we have to give them, we likely have to give them credits on the lease for the additional site development that they had to do to make the site usable. So, if you put too much on them, we don't make any money in the lease because we're just giving them credits back on their lease.
Great. Thank you for that question, or answer to that, my question. And then, I'm going to have one more. And this is in regards to something that, in your report, you talked about the fuel tax. And, and I had sent both you and Brian questions on the fuel tax because I had done some research. It was suggested that we should be charging instead of eight cents, 24 cents on fuel. And so, I did some research and I discovered that similar airports, so Redmond and Eugene, Metford, the price that they were charging was generally six to eight cents. That's what I read. And I also discovered by looking at the state that the state has limited to 12 cents. And earlier, the conversation is, you were saying that you were considering raising fuel tax to 10 cents. I'm just wondering if, if, because that might be jumping quite a bit ahead of some of the other airports, I'm just wondering what, what the, why? I guess I'm wondering why.
Yeah, and I think the person who could best answer that question retired, resigned a couple of weeks ago. Aaron, do you have any ideas to why we were going to raise it to 10 cents? Okay, so we are at 10 cents right now.
We are at 10 cents now?
We are at 10 cents right now.
Oh, I thought it was eight. Okay. Thank you.
It would have decreased July 1 with the new fee increases, so.
Yes, Counselor Barney?
Thank you. I had a quick question in regards to the debt service for the Airport Business Administration Center. Where, which fund is, are we paying that out of? I was just curious.
The Airport Fund?
Okay.
Is making that, that debt service payment to the city utility fund.
Okay.
Which is, which is why we desperately want to cover that debt service.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Matthews?
So, I wanted to ask, so I think it's, I know that when there was talk about closing that secondary runway, I know that there was kind of a big push from the aviation community to make sure that didn't happen. And so, I'm glad to see that there was a path forward with the FAA to be able to keep that funded. I know that with, by not closing it though, we lose out on some potential lots and lease opportunities for, you know, additional hangars. Am I right on that?
That is correct. One of the trade-offs would have been if we went down to a single runway and realigned the taxiways, then that would have opened up more potential property for development. So, that was one of the advantages of going, of downsizing to a single runway. However, the aviation community didn't see that as an advantage. And so, they've been, they were pretty vocal about their desire to keep both runways open. And I would remind everyone that, you know, we are, while we've talked a lot about commercial air service tonight, we are by far still a general aviation airport. The vast majority of our operations are general aviation aircraft. So, their desires are important as far as the runway.
Yeah, no, definitely. My biggest reason I ask though is, so knowing that we don't have those kind of potential future lots coming, are the lots that we currently have and the ones that we're leasing out, and if we were to be at full capacity of leasing all of our, all of our hangar space and having everything built out, would the airport at its current function break even or would we still not have enough at this point to actually fund it in a holistic way?
I'd have to, we'd have to come back with that answer. We'd have to do the math on that.
Okay.
And a lot of it depends on the rate in which those leases occur and, and then what the rate, the rental rate would be. Right now, it's 41 cents a square foot. It could be more than that over time. So, we'd have to kind of give that a good guess.
Counselor Brown?
And that same line of thinking, because obviously, we're always concerned about money. So, with your presentation, do we know how much we could potentially make if we were to rent out all those different hangars?
Yes, we have a, we have a little bit of an idea.
And I don't want you to speak out of turn. I'm just curious how much we could possibly bring in.
Thank you. My boss has a better memory than I do. About $122,000 in lease funding per year.
Per year?
Yep. 41 cents per square, 41 cents per square foot is, it's a modest amount, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Quinn?
If I miss this, I apologize. How many, so you said most of these are not, but how many are shovel-ready at this moment?
That'd be four sites.
Out of how many?
Well, out of 24 acres.
So, how large are they, are those parcels then?
Oh, hell. Okay, out of 14 sites that are, they're delineated, yeah.
Anyone else? Counselor Brown?
I want to follow that. So, do we make those amounts? Do we set that ourselves or the FAA sets that for us?
The lease amount?
The lease amount.
I believe, I believe that's us. We set that amount.
And so, with that being our decision, are we like equal with other airports or are we low or high? Like where are we when we look at other airports that are similar to us?
Yeah, we have periodic appraisals done every, is it every five years, I believe? Two years?
And where are we in that process now?
Well, they, they
We just did it?
They occur as their... You know, Counselor, I'm going to have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Totally fine, totally fine.
I don't want to give you the wrong answer, so.
No. And the reason I'm asking is because, again, I'm just thinking about the dollar and cents. Because if we're looking to, you know, make any additional income, it would be nice to know exactly where do we stack up against other airports that are potentially the same size? Just a thought. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Matthews?
I wanted to check some of the, my understanding of the math that we just did. So, so there's approximately 24 acres is what we're talking about of potential leasable space. Of that 24 acres, each acre is about 44,500 square feet approximately. I can't imagine these hangars are, are hangars are huge, right? And so, I'm trying to think, of only having 14 sites total on 24 acres seems like a low amount to 24 acres. But I don't know how big a hangar is usually, so.
These would be medium-to-large sized hangars. The smaller hangars are grouped over kind of on the western edge of the airport. And some of them are very small. But these sites that we're looking at, I would consider them to be medium-to-large hangars.
What does a medium-to-large hangar in square footage look like?
So, let me provide a little clarification. The 24 acres is what Mark was talking about. It was all of the shaded sites around the airport. The ones we were just talking about is the south area. And I, let's see.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's still showing on your screen or not. That's the one that have, has the 14 sites total that has already been identified, and four of those are shovel-ready. So, a lot of those are 100 by 150-foot sites.
Okay, gotcha. So, from a holistic standpoint of the airport as a total, because that was kind of my original question, is if all of the hangars, all the sites that we have ability to put hangars on were all actually leased out, which I understand we're not close to that point at this point.
That's correct.
But how, and maybe you don't have this number, but how many would that be? And my ultimate goal to getting to that again is just to find out, would we then be at a break-even point?
Right. And I think --
And I get, we may not have that.
Yeah, I don't think we have that information as of yet.
Anything further? Nothing? Counselor Brown? No. Counselor Barney, please, go ahead.
Okay, I had to bring this up. I was reviewing the document from the work session we had in February. And in regards to taxiway A, you know, at that time, when we were talking about runway 1634, it was going to impact what we did with taxiway A. And so, now that I look at, from the presentation tonight, that there's a north pavement rehab, that's only a section of taxiway A, like a third of it. What's going to happen with the other two sections that are going to be near the end of their life by 2035?
Well, they will be assessed by the FAA for future funding, future work. We're going to have the north, the north end of taxiway A addressed within the next couple of years. I think one of the things to keep in mind is until recently, until the FAA made this determination on 1634, they would not wanted to have put any investment in the south part of that taxiway, knowing that we might have to realign it if we had gone to a single, you know, primary runway without a secondary runway. One of the things we would have had to have done is realign the south end of taxiway Alpha. They would not want to invest in that twice. So, certainly, they're going ahead with the north end because that part is staying put. Okay.
Counselor Bane.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a really basic question, but what is a general aviation airport mean?
Yeah, general aviation is everything that is, okay, forgive me. It's everything that's not commercial, okay? Basically, it's, these are private aircraft. And as small as the FAA will allow, all the way up through very large, you know, commercial, private, corporate aircraft. So, it ranges from your little Piper Cubs and Cessnas all the way up to very large corporate jets. That's general aviation. They're not chartered, you know, certified air carriers by the FAA. So, that would be the difference.
Thank you.
Counselor Nishioke.
Yes. So, as Counselor Matthews was asking about the revenue coming in from the land use, we also just want to remind everyone that the hangars themselves, those individuals pay property taxes. So, there is other income that we get from that.
Thank you. Counselor Quinn, go ahead.
So, to that, the lease income, does that go to general fund, or where does that money go?
No, the lease income is a vital part of the airport fund. The property taxes would go to the general fund.
And then, the other thing that I wanted to say is more of a comment, I guess. But back to 1634, that didn't magically just become a legendary, or whatever, runway. So, I was just, I wanted to say thank you for listening to the airport community and the importance of that runway. So, however that magically happened, I just wanted to say thank you.
Really, it was just us questioning the FAA, and then the regulations changing at just the right time, which was great.
Yeah, that was a fine meeting. And to hear the folks talk about the wind and which way it blows and what's the safest way to land for those smaller aircraft. So, anyway, anything further? Yes, Counselor Brown.
One final question. Or Counselor Matthews probably has at least five more, so. So, back to the whole marketing, you know, I like the idea, I'm pretty sure we all do, we like how you're marketing, you know, to increase our revenue. And you have mentioned there, like, flight schools also. Do we currently have any, a flight school out there at all?
We have off and on. Do we have one currently, Erin? Okay, yeah. Yeah, we have, we don't have an operating flight school at the moment, but we do have some flight clubs where people go in together on aircraft. And then we have CTEC, which, from the school district. So, that is certainly, it's not teaching them how to fly, but it's everything about avionics and aircraft maintenance and all that, so.
Got it. And it was Erin, right? So, this would be part of your responsibility in growing the marketing and figure out how we can get more income, that falls on you?
Yes.
And do you have what you're going to accomplish in your first 100 days?
We have mobilized all the resources of Public Works, including our real estate team, to really move this forward. It's important.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Nishioke.
Thank you. We might just mention that several flight schools use the Salem Airport because of the landings they're required to instruct with. And so, they utilize our airport a lot, even though they may not be here.
Correct. The touch and goes, yes.
Anything further?
I'd just like to add, I think it'd be great to have CTEC come back and give us an update on what they're doing and what their numbers are like. I think that'd be awesome to hear, so.
Yeah, we can look into that.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Is there anything further? Counselor Brown? Nope. Okay, in that case, thank you so much, Mark. Great job tonight. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Counselors.